Thank you very much for coming this evening. It's a little chilly out there, so glad you showed up. This is the second of a series of CAT Connects in Allison Hill. We had a meeting last week, it was excellent. Some familiar faces here tonight. And that meeting actually influenced some changes we made in the last week with the services. I'd like to thank Ms. Janine Peterson for providing us, hosting me this evening. Thank you. Before we start, before we get into the CAT Connect part of our proposal, we have Paul Francis, who is a city engineer, who's going to give us a basic background on the timing, the conditions that Mallberry Street, the structure, how it will impact this community. So Paul, if you're ready to go next, okay? Do I need a microphone or am I loud enough now? Are you here? Okay, great. There's a few certainties in life. One certainty is, is a pretty good chance if you see a net hanging from a bridge to catch debris from falling on traffic, chances are something's gonna happen. That's kind of where we are right now. That netting that I referred to has been up since about 2008. Pendott's been working on it, on a viable plan to repair the bridge. It's partially sand, but there's cosmetic things that need to be done to the surface so that it's, number one, it's not losing chunks of the bridge anymore, and so that's gonna be a better driving surface. It's gonna be done in two parts, basically. It's gonna take about two years. First part is gonna be the superstructure. You can tell what the superstructure is if you're walking across the bridge, it's everything you can see. It's the roadway surfaces, it's the curves, it's the sidewalk, it's the aridits, or the railing that you have, the streetlights, the signage, everything you can see, all of that is gonna be replaced. And that's gonna take about one year, one year from launch, approximately. If they run out of tough weather, it's gonna take longer. If they work faster, then it's gonna take a little shorter. The second part is also gonna take about a year. That's where the netting is right now, that's called the substructure. And that's all the part of the bridge that you can see. If you're looking up at Cameron Street, it's all probably the part of the bridge that you can see. That's gonna take about a year. I think the thing that we're gonna learn, Paul learns, is how great an asset this bridge is because you could walk from Hill District to River District in no time. And we're gonna be without that now for about a year or so. So that's kind of why CAT got together to do this presentation, is to give you an idea, is to add public transportation, is going to help you make that, make that walk and leap into the non-bridge area for the year. Some of the drawings that Pendott prepared, I'm gonna, there's flashing a map up on the screen, and I'm kind of walking around a little bit. If you have any questions towards the latter part of the presentation, or, I don't know, right now, also too, I'll try to answer them. This is, this is the maintenance of traffic plan that Pendott prepared. So let me begin by pointing down. Yes, there it is. This is, this is Mallberry Street Bridge. This is Chestnut Street. Here's Dairy Street on the other side, there's Dairy Street. Oh, actually, this is Dairy Street. This is Mallberry, this is Dairy. This is Crescent. Crescent and Water Street. And what they're gonna ask, let's see, the truck traffic is gonna go all the way up, they're gonna come up, maybe from 13th Street, this is 13th Street, they're gonna come up, they're gonna bypass this, they're passing Market, this is Market Street, up to State Street, and entering into the city that way, and then in reverse to leave, of course. The pedestrians are gonna be asked to, from all these neighborhoods, is to go north on 13th Street, this is Market Street, to walk up Market, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to go past Cameron Street, this is the street right here. And that's, that's gonna be quite an obstacle, it's one that we haven't had to contend with because we've been walking over it for as long as we've been around. But from the interior of the time, what Pendott's going to do at this intersection right now is, they're gonna re-stripping, which is helping out bring out the crosswalks. They have, they replace, this is, this is the Market Street subway right here, this is the railroad track. This is the Market Street subway. They changed the lights, the LED lights for pedestrian, for the superiors. And pedestrians are gonna access the Capitol, Strawberry Square is over here. So that's the way, that's the access for pedestrians. And it's gonna be a little awkward, of course, and it's gonna require that we go out of our way, it's gonna take a lot longer time to do it. But that's, that's what we're here to talk about, we're here to gather, not only to inform you of this, but we're also here to gather if your questions or anything else that you can possibly do to help us. So I guess that's, that's really what I have to say, that's Martin, I'll call it a presentation. So I'll take, I'll take some questions.
At the beginning of the Mallberry Street Bridge, there's some steps.
Yes.
On the right-hand side.
There's some right, there's steps. Yeah, there's, there's steps right there. They're not really, they're not really very functional unless you want to fly. We're gonna, we're gonna close those steps, as a matter of fact, in the future. Because what we're hoping is that people will use the ramp we built several years ago. In other words, that's handicap accessible as well. And you can go from Cameron Street up to the top of Mallberry Street using that ramp here with the pedestrian. So that's why these, these steps are very, very difficult to use, they don't really, the bottom part, they don't really have, there isn't a proper path from the bottom that starts currently. So I'm just gonna close these. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Randall, I'm a resident homeowner of Allison Hill. And I actually don't have a question, I have an idea.
All right.
I like to just go ahead and get it out of the way so I'm no longer nervous.
Super.
And I apologize, Mr. Collins gave me his card at the last meeting that I procrastinated calling him with this idea. But I'm concerned with the hundreds of people that normally walk across Mallberry Street Bridge to go downtown and work. And these are people that may not be able to afford, or they just don't ride the CAT bus for $1.75, or even wouldn't let them ride ticket. So this is a steep hill on Market Street, especially going back up. And my, my thoughts too, are no matter how bright you make the crosswalks across Cameron Street, people drive fast and they often go through the yellow light, and it's very difficult to cross that street without some kind of pedestrian bridge or something. So my idea was, I noticed at the hub of 13th and Dairy, just down, first street on the right is Vernon. It is a one-way, but there's a small parking lot across from the church. So I was thinking that if, like a shuttle, maybe the shared ride buses or a bus could pull into that small parking lot, and we have a big sign at 13th and Dairy for a shuttle, like a 50-cent shuttle or maybe an all-around trip, where people that aren't riding the normal CAT bus routes could be transported down Market Street, either to that big parking lot by the old post office, or, or even out to State Street, or else, but on up to the downtown area. Just a short shuttle so that elderly people and people that, like I said, can't afford to ride at $1.75 a day would be able to get up and down that hill.
That sounds like a viable idea. I think, I think CAT can, you go from Capital Area Transit, they can flush that out for you a little bit, and answer your questions better than I can. That's, that's not a bad idea. Is there any, any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
During the idea, how much additional traffic is going to be going up 17th Street? Right now, at different times of the day, traffic is bumper to bumper, and between Dairy Street all the way up to State Street.
Pendott's done a traffic study. They will be able to estimate exactly the percentages increase, but they derive this route regardless, if there's not a whole lot of great options. One thing that's incumbent on the contractor to do is to take a look at the traffic signal times for that intersection that you're referring to, and several of the others in the area, to change the timing on them, to try to optimize the amount of time that each, each traffic movement has. Which, which can change, that changes during the morning and afternoon peaks, it's a dynamic sensing type, type change, but you can change, you can change the ranges. And I think we're probably gonna be doing that with some of the pedestrian crossings as well, like for instance down at Cameron.
So is, is Pendott involved with CAT, Capital Area Transit, in looking at these change routes? Because down in this area, so if you go out of this door, we're at 15th Street, 16th Street, all of these are one-ways. They all feed back out onto 17th Street. If we could get some change in direction, the over 200 people that need in and out of here, which are, who are employees, wouldn't have to egress, all of them onto 17th Street if we had other options. So it's just, just something to throw out here, if Pendott's in this planning process with me.
Yes. You know, it's, it's like anything, we can only plan as well as we can plan with the information that we have, and do the best we can initially. But it's, it's incumbent on us to keep on top of things, and if there's issues that we can resolve, maybe to communicate. So that's why, that's one of the reasons why we're making these types of presentations. Yes, ma'am?
Officer Carrick, did the city make a final decision on the murals?
Um, I don't think they made any final decisions, and I, I would be remiss of me to go on as to what I know, because it's just hearsay more or less. I do know that they're gonna be stored temporarily at the old post office until we decide exactly what to do. There's, there's talk, just very briefly and generally, there's some talk about putting some in some of the playgrounds, for instance, maybe putting one along Cameron Street, right at the cul-de-sac of, I don't recall what street that is, offhand, but, but they'll be scattered throughout the city at various places, I understand. Excuse me, ma'am, yes, ma'am?
Have CAT or Pendott looked at the cost of maybe constructing a temporary walking bridge? Because I understand what you're saying about putting in, like, the raised pedestrian crosswalks, but, I mean, let's feel, be realistic here, people don't use the crosswalks as it is. Even going across Cameron Street, they don't use them. So it's still a safety issue for the pedestrians when you get rid of a bridge that, like the gentleman was saying, is used as a main thoroughfare for people to get from out on the hill to downtown.
Right, right. Pendott considered it, as a matter of fact, I made myself very unpopular with Pendott. My first meeting, I said, "There's no way you're gonna close this bridge for a year, you're not gonna do it. What you're gonna have to do is keep a lane open, at least one lane and one pedestrian lane." And they said, "No, there's no way, Paul, we can do that, it's just way too expensive." By the way, it's gonna shut the bridge down for more than two years, it's gonna be long, it's gonna cost a lot more in terms of construction costs. I was concerned about, you know, evacuating during a flood, there's a lot of things, emergency services, and of course pedestrians, as well. We had lengthy discussions and, you know, with the dollars, and the timing, and, it's like, it's like anything, you have to weigh a lot of the different factors. Pendott felt in the final analysis that they had the best, best plan that they could have imagined, so that's what we're gonna go back with. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, one thing I had forgotten, I was thinking about, if that parking lot along Vernon is usable, I think it may be private pay own. But it is a one-way street off 13th. However, the local traffic could be rerouted between the buildings that are, between 13th and Vernon, and they could turn in and still go to their respective houses.
Yeah, Janine explained, back to two-way, one-way, there's a lot of factors involved there.
Right.
So we'll do the best we can with accommodating your requests and considering your requests, but, you know, we'll try, we'll try the best we can. We want, we want you to be happy, we don't want you to be mad at convenience, but taking this route, we're gonna really miss this bridge, if I'm not wrong.
Why don't we go towards State and not go back towards Paxton Street? With a lot of already front traffic.
Go south, go south on Paxton Street.
Yeah, it takes 17 to go the other way. With truck traffic. Go down either Sicklemoor, um, Marahill, if you drop down, we can go as far as Paxton, or you have the expressway right there, they need to give them one, and get that off at Second Street.
You know, I don't, I don't know, and why they didn't do this, this is, this is correct, if you're saying Paxton Street might be a better option.
Because you've got too much traffic going into State, you have to stay while it's coming out, it's taking the other way.
I'm guessing the current movements, that's a lot to do with it. If you did that, you'd have to go up Cameron Street, make a left on Market Street, and I guess that might take a lot more time. State Street gives you a free flow into.
Possible tracks.
Into Capitol, but also, you know, that's what trucks are gonna be getting, also for deliveries into the center of the city.
What are Paxton Street's numbers?
No, I don't, I don't have the numbers.
Okay, wait.
I'm sure they weigh, the current use of Second Street versus Paxton Street. So I'm guessing that the numbers may have been smooth way to go, we'll find out.
If you go down State, you might do it out there, it's all the same, come around.
It's queued up quite a bit, and probably had a factor of backing traffic up and down through, which already happens. You went Paxton Street, you know, people making a ramp in Paxton Street, or jam up Second Street, Second Street already backs up. Second Street already backs up, it's a day to three of it, so it's probably. Yes, ma'am?
So the plus, 1920, 322 and 15, which direction are they gonna be coming? They all use Mallberry Street Bridge to come around, so where are they gonna be?
Well, if they're coming in on any of those, any of those fronts, they're gonna use State Street.
State Street, what about Market?
Well, Market is, Market is pretty much local, so it's a one-way, so that's probably why they have to change. And it's already pretty congested, I mean, it's, it's loading up reduced lanes.
So the question that this lady just asked, so.
Yes, maybe I didn't ask that.
And I don't know if you're gonna cover this, maybe this is premature. So you're gonna actually create routes going, I'll call it, cross-town now, like 17th Street route?
17th Street's gonna remain the same as it is right now.
No, I, I know, I'm talking about the buses.
We're beginning to get to that.
Okay.
I'm beginning to feel.
Great.
I'm just kinda giving you the 10,000-foot view of what we're doing, and Capital Area Transit will fill in what we're missing in terms of the public transportation.
Well, Cameron Street traffic, it'll all be affected once they start working on that area that crosses over.
Um, affected in what way?
Will they go down to one lane, or nothing overhead, so?
No, I, what I understand, Cameron Street's not gonna be affected by, by the bridge traffic now, or by the bridge construction now. Yes, ma'am?
Are there any plans to work on or repair the stairway access to Cameron Street at the end of Sylvan Terrace?
Uh, I think that's, they were the steps that we were talking about earlier.
Okay, other plans to fix that?
We're gonna, no, we're gonna close the, those steps off.
Okay.
And if you needed to get down to Cameron Street from the bridge, you would use the ramp, you would go across and then down the ramp. That way you have ADA access as well.
I see.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks very much. Any other for Paul Francis? Paul's the city engineer, and there are overlapping responsibilities in this project, it's a massive project, Pendott has a role, the city has a role, and CAT has a role. So if we have no further questions for Paul Francis, we'll move to CAT's part of this presentation. Thank you, Paul. Here, Paul Francis, thank you. I'll be here for the rest of the meeting, so if you have something that you think I can help you with, I'll entertain questions at the end of the presentation. As far as CAT planning is proceeding, we've, we have, as you can see, the bridge is impacting many aspects of the Allison Hill community. It's impacting the bus service in the area, but we have an opportunity to improve service in the area absolutely. And the first CAT Connect meeting that we had, we got some excellent input that has already become part of our plan. And as far as the pedestrian issue goes, we're also taking a look at that, but that's not solely a CAT responsibility, so we'll have some ideas for that in the near future. Where we are in our planning is, we're getting, we're kind of honing in on the final changes, detour changes, that will be in effect for at least 256 days after the closing of the bridge, which is now scheduled for the first weekend, April 2nd or so. So tonight, what we're gonna go over first, quickly, we're gonna cover who's CAT, CAT's mission, what CAT, the current level of service in the Allison Hill area that's provided by CAT, which is, as we'll see, it's really excellent community service as far as outreach from CAT to other locations in Cumberland and Dofford County. Then we're gonna look at the service routes, the route changes, what the changes mean, then we'll have a Q and A to cover any, any questions that will come out of the presentation, and then we'll focus, we'll close, we'll look at, through reduced fares, opportunities that Pendott and the state and federal government underwrite that we can, we can apply to this neighborhood. Got a couple CAT representatives here tonight, we have Bill Jones, our general manager, Tom Young, our assistant general manager is here, we've got some experts, CAT staff, which we'll introduce when we get to the Q and A part. Now we have Julie Shade, who's a marketing manager, she's gonna kick this presentation off, and then Tom Collins, who's our senior planner, will get into questions about changes and the schedule. So again, thank you, and please do Julie.
Should I or should I not use this microphone?
It's up to you, yeah.
What's that?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right. Then I will not use the microphone, but I will speak out. Thank you all for coming. The first question we're ready to answer is, who is CAT? CAT is a not-for-profit public transportation agency that was formed by Cumberland County, Dofford County, and the city of Harrisburg in 1973. We're wrapping up our 40th anniversary, which we started celebrating last April, we will wrap that up in the next month. So we've been around for 40 years, public transit in Harrisburg has been around for a lot longer than that. We provide fixed route bus service, we provide rural bus service in Shippensburg, and we also provide paratransit or shared ride services. Our shared ride program is an eligibility-based program, based on age, certain disabilities, and income. The disability service is for people who are unable to use city buses, and the income and age criteria can be determined by contacting our shared ride division, because there are a lot of caveats to using that service. So I don't wanna go into a lot of that right now, but if you have questions about CAT's shared ride service, please contact CAT, we can answer questions there in this presentation. It is a reservation-based, door-to-door, on-demand service. You make your reservation a day in advance, and you can ride door-to-door from your starting point to your ending point and back again. The bus service that we have, we have 78 buses, they are all fully wheelchair-accessible, they have audio announcements for the visually impaired, we have signage in the front and the sides of the buses for those who are orally impaired, and we also have staff of drivers who are available to answer questions for those first-time bus riders and those who are not familiar with our system. We have 52 shared ride vans, and in 2013, CAT transported over 2.6 million bus passengers and almost 200,000 shared ride passengers. Okay, who pays for all of this? Well, funding comes from a variety of sources, because we are a not-for-profit agency. 18% of CAT's operating budget is received from a variety of social service agencies of customer costs of circuit customers' rides, who get to medical appointments and those kinds of things. The city of Harrisburg, Cumberland County, and Dofford County, as our owners, provide a combined 4% of our operating expenses. You, as the fare-paying passenger, provide a total of 18% of our operating revenue. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, via Pendott, provides grants, a total of about 35% of our operating costs. And finally, the remaining 25% is federal funding that is used to maintain our bus fleet, as well as provide necessary repairs to our facility. They don't really provide, the feds don't really provide operating assistance, but the capital money that they provide, we can use to maintain the buses and the buildings. So you see, by that pie, when I say we're a not-for-profit, that the majority of our funding is taxpayer-dog. CAT's mission. CAT's mission is to improve the quality of life in central Pennsylvania by providing comprehensive public transportation service. Our goal is meeting customer expectations, achieving regional smart growth and mobility objectives, being responsible stewards of public resources, and supporting a professional and dedicated workforce. Part of our mission is doing these kinds of meetings, reaching out to our customer base, finding out what it is that you need to get from point A to point B. You're held to pay for it, we need to know how to best do that. CAT in your neighborhood. Allison Hill has a lot of service, as Bob mentioned, there are a lot of routes and buses that go through this neighborhood. Route 1, Market Street, 8, Dairy Street, Route 13, which covers 13 and Paxton Streets, Route 15, which currently serves Berry Hill and Union Deposit, Route 19, Seaton, Route 20 goes to High Point Commons, and Route 322 is serviced to Hershey. The buses in this area will stop 227 times each weekday at stops in Allison Hill area. On Saturday, they stop 112 times. So they're currently, you currently have really good service in this area, and as you will hear, that good service is not really gonna change. It's gonna move around a little bit, but it's not really gonna decrease at all. From the corner of 13th and Market Street, we're listing a number of different places that you can go, and how long it will take to get there, and the route that you can take. So you can see, you can get to downtown Harrisburg in nine minutes via any of the routes that come through Allison Hill. Hershey Medical Center, you can get there in 22 minutes via Route 322. The Harrisburg Mall, you can get there in 27 minutes. Sharp Shop, Route in Middletown, you can get there via Route 7 in 29 minutes, and Penn State Middletown in 39 minutes. So we can get you to a variety of locations throughout CAT's service area from right in the middle of Allison Hill. If you want further information on any of these, talk to one of the CAT staff members after the presentation to be happy to help you. And now, I'm going to turn this portion of the program over to our senior planner, Tom Collins, who's going to talk about the current routes and the changes that are coming up. Tom?
Thank you, Julie. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So a couple of you the other night that backed, backed your board, do have a couple changes in store. I'd like to talk first about the routes that already serve your area. This is the way things are right now. The routes, the route on Market Street, Route 1, will not change a bit, and neither will Route 13 on 13th Street. The routes that, so Mallberry Street Bridge are, as Julie said, Route 8, 15, 19, 20, and several early morning trips on Hershey, Route 322. That's the way things are right now. That's the way things are right now. Okay, this is the way we have things plotted out for the detour. Without the bridge, obviously, we have to go somewhere. The, most of the routes.
We've got our laser pointer, so we can show you where.
Okay, Route 8, 19, 20, and 322 will be operating up Market Street to make a right on 13th Street, just the way the 13 does now. Once they get on Dairy Street, they go off on their respective routes. Now that does, that takes an extra, really only takes an extra two minutes to go from downtown to 13th and Dairy than it does right now. Route 15, we're going to change the routing completely. What we want to do is serve the Hamilton Health Center where we are tonight. And in order to do that, we decided, this is a change from the other night, to access the Hamilton Health Center by using State Street, come all the way in 17th Street in an area where we don't have any service at all. And to do that, the Route 15 will leave downtown, make a left on Fifth Street, go over the State Street Bridge, go out State Street, make a right on 17th, go straight across 17th, stopping right out front, make a left on Dairy Street, and then continue on out to Berry Hill Street. We've looked at several other alternatives, including putting it on 13th Street along with the rest of the routes. But this gave us an opportunity to serve an area which has no service at all, there's no service at all on 17th Street. This way, we'll be able to spot all along 17th Street, serve the Health Center, and also an extra spot right down the street here at 17th and Vernon. Then we'll make a left turn on Dairy Street and go out on the route the way it is now. So what do the changes mean? We're going to talk about the downsides first. Gentleman talked about Silken, obviously, we have stops in Silken Crescent and Hall right now, which we won't be able to serve because they're right in the bridge construction zone. We won't be going down that way at all. So those stops, we're going to institute a new stop at 13th and Thompson, and then on the outbound, we'll be stopping just a little bit west of 13th Street, actually closer to 14th Street, 14th and Dairy. As I said, we'll be stopping at Hamilton Health Center. 26 trips a day, we'll be going up and down 17th Street, that's actually 13 trips in each direction on the new stop at 17th and Vernon. By putting the rest of the routes on 13th Street, if you were standing on the corner of 13th and Market, with all the routes going by except Route 15, actually wouldn't even need a timetable. We'll have five different routes serving that area. So what does this do to your travel time? Time increases on the routes that are on 13th Street, two minutes in each direction. On Route 15, it will add seven minutes in each direction, serve 17th Street. It's kind of an overview of what we have planned. We'll take some questions in the question and answer session and talk about that. Thanks, Senator North. Hi, Al.
As you can see, we've got a, we've got a plan and a strategy to respond to the detour and the disruption of service, minimal disruption of service as far as the buses go, resulting from the Mulberry Street Bridge construction. Any questions? Now's the time, and we can talk about some of this in more detail if you need. Yes, ma'am.
We're going to put up the flag signs. What are the signs, Al?
On 17th Street?
Yes.
Yes. Stops all along 17th Street.
Signs, actually signs.
Oh, yeah.
So you can understand that I was told earlier, one of the complaints when we had the Route 17, they used flag stops and there were no marked stops, so that I was informed earlier that they would like us to make sure that we have designated stops so they understand.
Oh, that's right. You remember Route 17, which was about six years ago, which maybe that was part of the massive success we had with that.
Definitely. The last.
And we've, we've talked to the city tonight, to Paul Francis, and we discussed a crosswalk with a pedestrian symbol, and then we, CAT will have stops on either side at the front entrance to Hamilton Hill, uh, Hamilton Health Center. And there'll be, there'll be more plans as, as we go home and more changes. Right now, our focus tonight, our focus tonight is on the rally, making sure it's convenient. Yes, ma'am.
So if, I mean, I'm sure the ridership, because they're, they're switching routes, will be there, is there the possibility of those routes staying after the Mulberry Street Bridge is closed to give better access to people coming from one end, that end of town across 17?
What would you like to?
Most definitely. We think this is just an opportunity, the beginning, this is just the beginning of what, I, I look at this, I understand that it's going to cause some disruption for people in the Mulberry Street Bridge on, on the, that would be what, the east side of the bridge, definitely. But are there greater benefits? Ultimately, when you think about a bus going across the bridge, who lives on a bridge? Who are you going to pick up on a bridge? Now we're traveling through communities. Should some of these be incorporated into our long-term plan? We're using this detour as an opportunity to evaluate that service and how can we improve it.
Because the 19 bus, which went from where to where?
The 19 will come up Market Street, make a right on 13, left on Dairy, right on 19 Street, and it's on its regular route.
Oh, okay. Back down to Silver.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you considered reduced fares just for the months that the bridge is being repaired for people that don't normally ride the bus downtown and back to Allison Hill?
We're looking at several options, and we're going to talk about reduced fares here in a couple of minutes.
Sure. So I can, I'm not trying to avoid your question, but I need to define the roles. You have to understand, this project in itself is a Pendot project. It's in the city, but it's affect, CAT's being affected, and this is how we're adjusting. You know, CAT, like any other, like your personal budget, we have a certain amount of money. And every time we do this, it costs money, and we have to understand, we just, if we put another bus out to do your pedestrian traffic, how are we going to pay for that? And we're just trying to work along with Pendot. You know, we, we, off of our last meeting last week, we went to the pre-construction meeting with Pendot and said, we heard this from the customer, we made sure that they heard that. We also talked, so that you also know, I had some personal issues with the pedestrian going across Cameron. I thought, you know, you sit there, I personally, coming out of downtown, you're traveling west or east on Market, you get to Cameron, you want to make a left, you have the protected arrow, you turn, and all of a sudden, there's a pedestrian. Should there not be a delay before the crosswalks, the cross, before the protected arrow? We've made some suggestions, which they are exploring. But remember, this is a Pendot, but we are taking this, these back, and we will continue to work with them in our role as we're being affected, because we will need some financial assistance. We would love to do that, there's several options, whether that be being able to offer, you know, another bus on a shared ride, whether that be reduced fares on fixed route, those, but again, that takes money, and we're, we're hoping that we can mitigate some of those issues with their assistance.
Yes, ma'am.
Concerned?
Yes.
Currently, if I take any of those routes, I can get home late and have full time. I have noticed sometimes when there may be a detour that can't be helped, and I may take a different bus. Driver feels that it's not his regular route, so if, if they were turning right on 13th Street, I'll use that for an example, and it's a 322 bus, and there's a bus stop right at 13th and Market, across from the fire station, I would ring the bell to get out there. They feel that's normally not their route, so they don't have to stop there. Moving forward with this, everybody making the adjustment, would that still be the same?
Well, we have with us tonight Brian Dean, who is, who's the assistant operations manager, it's a driver issue, Brian, what comment?
Well, the drivers will be stopping at all, any, any stop that's noted on the detour route, drivers will be stopping there. They will know about it, and they will, you know, they'll service you whatever needs you have.
And this is, it's sort of, you know, a three-way process. There's our ideas, the CAT management team, there's yours, the customer. But then we also have to look at the driver, and the drivers are the people, they're out where the rubber meets the road, and we have to listen to them too, because they know better.
Because the time factor, and that's a difference.
Well, time factor, but also safety factor. Where can you safely discharge people, you know, it, it, there's a lot, and I look at this as a work in progress. We're going to have to hear back from everybody, everybody's going to have to get their heads together on this, but we will do plan on improving the signage along this, so people understand where the bus stops are. And of course, I guess the other party that I didn't even mention is the city. The city has to work with us too, because sometimes if you have a bus stop, it affects parking, and, you know, parking is definitely at a premium in this region.
And my other comment was, it's not seven buses, eight buses, the 14 does operate in the, this area, but it just only goes up Market Street into the Univazza area.
That's correct. Two, two trips in the morning and two trips in the afternoon. Pretty sharp, that was a terrible.
I guess this is just another comment, and, and I can truly appreciate the budget issues. You do, I, I have no doubt going out to Union Deposit, Colonial Park, I mean, it's where the employers are, where people are trying to get into city or out. The folks that are in south Harrisburg are very alienated, but there's a lot of people who need to ride. And right now, what happens is they have to ride all the way to town to the transfer station to come back out here. So that's, you know, going down towards Paxton on the other side. A lot of our consumers here, our patients here, have children, trying to take a child with a stroller on a bus downtown, but come back out can be a problem. I know you can't solve that now, just a point of information that maybe in the future we can sit down as this thing progresses, to look at those kinds of possibilities.
Well, to be honest with you, we're working on that very issue right now. And actually, plot, plot is one of the key parts, and if you look at a lot of the CAT team that's around, we, we formed a, a team, it's called the CAT tomorrow team, looking, if you look at the CAT system right now in 2014, and you went back to, say, 1944 and looked at the CAT system, it looks almost exactly the same. There's very, I mean, except for a couple of express routes, and you're telling me the service that, you know, the region hasn't changed considerably in that same period of time? We're sitting amongst ourselves going, this doesn't make any sense, but we need to hear from you, the customer, what does make sense? We just, you know, we have ideas, that's what we get paid to do, but we want to float our ideas in front of you, we want to hear your thoughts, your concerns, just how we did on the, we talked about the Route 15, from last week to this week, we changed it. We heard what you said last week, we made some adjustments to it. There's a lot to do, you have a limited pot of money, but what's the best way to reallocate our resources? What are the needs? How can we better operate in the region? So this is the beginning of, we have the CAT tomorrow team to hear what you're saying and start designing, and then we have the CAT Connect to gather all that information, bring it back, and over the course of the next several years, it's not going to happen to one fell swoop. It, there's a lot, we need, you know, we need to be hearing from everybody throughout the whole region, because if we improve in here, that's going to come from some other place. Where, what's the best way about reallocating our resources?
And we will be hoping CAT Connect will decide what we're seeking soon, not immediately. Any other questions? Got it, right? Yes, ma'am.
Did you guys make a decision as far as the intersections that are tight, how the buses are going to make the turns?
Yes, sir.
Have you made, if you guys made a decision, we talked last week about the intersection that's tight turns, how the buses are going to do that?
As we have, through the spread house, Tom, you might address that, we've looked specifically at that, that question on 17th Street, 13th Street. Well, the turn from Market to 13th, we do every day with the 13 now, so we'll just be doing it a few more times a day than we do it now. And the turn, the reason we changed, I mentioned the last time, we looked at several options for Route 15. One of the reasons we didn't go straight up Market Street to make a right on 17th Street was the turn. The other, then we looked at going, making a left turn from 17th to Market, the way that the traffic and the parking is there, we kind of ruled that out. Now with the change on 15, we'll be going straight across 17th Street, it's an easy turn from 17th to State to and from, and the turn from 17th to Dairy with an advanced left is also easy. And we've done that with a full 40, we have two-size buses, 35-foot bus, you know, we only have seven of those. The rest of the fleet are 40, 40-foot buses, and we did it with a full-size bus. We, we tried all sorts of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Tom Young, the assistant general manager is here. Tom, anything you want to, to be missed?
I think you're covering it all.
Okay. Well, after you said that, I'm going to ask Julie to go back and explore and explain some of the rider bonuses and reduced fare options that, that are available to, to the community of Allison Hill.
CAT has a number of different ways for you to be able to ride the bus and pay for that ride. The basic way is regular cash fare, we offer an 11-ride pass, monthly pass, we have reduced fare service as well as pre-bus service. The regular cash fare, one-way on each of our buses in Zone 1, which covers most of our downtown area, which covers all of downtown and a lot of the surrounding area around the city, is $1.75. And I'm sure many of you who ride the bus know this, the CAT, the operator does not carry any change, so you do need exact change to ride the bus. If you are going to ride the bus with some frequency but not on a regular basis, and you'd like to have the freedom of not carrying change or carrying cash to ride the bus, we do offer an 11-ride pass. It costs $16.50, and it is available to anyone who rides the bus. It gives you 10 rides at $1.65 each, with the 11th ride free. And you just heard me say that for $1.75, you can ride the bus anywhere. With the 11-ride pass, it's additionally discounted to $1.65 per ride, plus the 11th ride free. So to buy one of those passes and put it in your pocket is a great deal, it never expires. You were about to ask a good question?
You need to put in for a transfer, or you lose the trip.
Yes, you, I was about to say that, thank you. You do have to buy a transfer. If not, you will be charged an additional trip. So when you show the card to the driver, and you want to make a transfer to complete your ride, purchase a transfer for 25 cents, and then give that to the driver on the next bus. But this at least gives you some discounted opportunities if you're an infrequent rider. For those people who ride the bus on a more frequent basis or regularly, the most economical way to pay for bus service is with a monthly pass. A Zone 1 monthly pass is $49, and it's good for the entire calendar month. It gives you anywhere in Zone 1, which is the majority of, which is the city of Harrisburg, from Middletown to Mechanicsburg. from Middletown to McCannsburgh, and you do not have to pay for transfers, you just show the pass to the driver. These passes are available at our self-service vending kiosks, at the Market Square Transfer Center, as well as the Keystone Building, which houses PennDOT. And you can also purchase them at CAT's office on Cameron Street, at our Strawberry Square office, as well as at all other locations throughout the service area. If you have a disability, but you are still able to ride a fixed route of city bus, you can apply for a reduced transit fare card. This is a program that is sponsored by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There is an application process. It does need to be completed by the physician. There are qualifying disabilities that you need to meet in order to receive this card. If you do qualify, you are eligible to ride half of the total fare on your trip. If you are under the age of sixty-five and have one of those red, white, and blue Medicare cards, you automatically qualify for this program. You would need to complete the top portion of the application, make a copy of your Medicare card, and bring a form of identification to CAT's office, and they can complete the transaction for you. We do have applications here tonight, if you are interested in that, you can take that with you. And finally, if you are over the age of sixty-five, you can ride our buses for free anytime, anywhere, anyplace. I'm sorry, Bill?
Fixed route buses, you have to make sure that the...
The fixed route buses, yes. Our buses. You may ride our buses anytime, anywhere, if you're over the age of sixty-five. We have a very brief application that you can fill out. We have some of those here tonight. We can issue a card to you. All we need is a form of identification. We accept a PACE ID card, a passport, a driver's license, a penciling ID card, a birth certificate. Also, if you don't have one of those things with you, or you want to take an application for a family or a friend, we can give you, Nicole, who's in the back, can give you one of those applications to take along with you. That is for the fixed route buses. For shared ride, there are a number of different programs for which people can qualify. I'm not going to get into that, because that would be a whole nother two-hour presentation. But if you have any questions about that, we'll be happy to try and answer those after this is finished. So that gives you an idea of all the different options that you have to pay your bus service. If you have questions about any of those items, please talk to one of us after the presentation, we'll be happy to try and answer those questions. If you have questions that you think of after you leave here, you can always call our information line at (238) 8304. And you can also visit our website. If anyone here would like information on how to navigate our website, we'll be happy to do that with you afterwards. We have access to Wi-Fi, and we can walk through some things, we're not going to do that at this point. But if you do have questions and want some answers on those things, we'll be happy to go over that with you. Are there any other questions about what we've gone over here this evening? The walk-in locations you see also have our hours of operation, 7:30 a.m., 4 p.m., at our office on Cameron Street, and our Strawberry Square office, which is on the second floor, is open from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. Monday through Friday. I thank you very much. I'm going to turn it back now to Bob.
Thank you.
For the programming.
So tonight we focused on the Allison Hill Transit Community Bridge. Everything we talked about has to do with this community and the surrounding communities. CAT services Dolphin and Compton County, a thousand square miles, five hundred thousand people. But we're able to look at the various communities in our service area and do exactly what we've done tonight all around, all around CAT's service area. So if there are no further questions, we'll hear some closing words from Bill Jones. Thank you for coming.
And I guess that's my basic closing, is saying thank you. You took time out of your very busy schedule to come here and hear what we had to say, but also give us the feedback. I think if you look at what was presented last, what was, what night was that, that was last Wednesday, compared, you know, five days later, this is slightly different. We changed that Route Fifteen. We heard what you had to say. You said that intersection at Thirteenth, or Seventeenth and Dairy, the way we, wasn't a good way to do it. We heard you, we went back, and we re-engineered, and we looked in a better way. That's only scratching the surface of what we need to do. This is a new day at CAT. Two years ago, when the CAT Board looked and did its first strategic plan, the CAT Board said, "We need to put the customer first." Isn't that who we're geared for? That's what we're doing right now, talking to you and giving you a vehicle to talk back to us, communicate. You know, you were talking about, you know, we talked about different ways to call us and talk to us, but also help us communicate with you. You understand, last week, when we had some of these bad weather situations, we, you know, we put it on our website. We have messages on our phone system. But did you also know that you're, we're able, if you sign up through our website, you can get text messages, you can get emails that'll tell you when we're having route service disruptions? We can communicate with you. Take time to do that. But also, you can use that website, there's a customer comment site. Tell us what you think. Tell us how we can do our job better. We do care, the CAT Board cares, the CAT staff. In fact, I'm very proud of the staff. The CAT Tomorrow Team would put this together. This is exciting, and I look forward to working with you in the future, because there's a lot more we, potential we have in the capital region. Thank you all very much.
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you doing outreach to people who have access to the computer? You know, helping people who don't always have computer access, how are you getting that to them?
Well, we do put, we do put messages on the TV, and actually, what was it, the last, was that last week when we had the snow? And we heard back from the customer saying, "It's not on TV." And I was like, "Well, we've notified, because we have to have access codes, we put it out there." We found out on the TV that there was overall, I went to one of the local TV stations that day, there was eleven hundred announcements. So the chances of seeing ours, you might get it every couple of hours. That's why we try to stress it. I do apologize, but like I said, we have it on the website, we have the voice announcements, we put it on the TV and on the radio, but they can only do so much. So we're trying whatever we can. And if you have any other ideas...
Are you going to look for businesses where people like that, frequencies, if you're walking, you know, low stores or whether, you know, flyers for the changes that are coming?
A lot of times in those situations, in bad weather situations, it's not very fair to go out.
I'm talking about the change, when the bridge is closing. How are you getting that information out to people who don't have access to the computer?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you interested in the neighborhood, is what I'm asking?
Are you connected to the internet?
I'm connected to the internet.
All right. Do we have, you know, are you receiving CAT updates currently?
No.
Okay. If you leave your email address here...
I did that.
We'll put you in the system, and you'll be getting it.
I'm not asking for it myself, I'm asking for those people that have access.
As far as the community does?
The community.
Yes.
You know, that don't have access, there are a lot of people that don't have access to computers on a daily basis. And if they're not aware of the changes that are being made, how are you going to let them know?
Right now, we're partnering with Community Action Commission on Dairy Street, the Latino Community Center on Dairy Street, a bank, and Hamilton Health Center. We're going to provide large maps that show the changes of the routes. And these will be formally cast and stelling here very shortly. And we're going to, as soon as we have a date, we're going to publish schedules in English and in Spanish. The Latino Community Center will distribute to the Latino community, and we'll distribute CAT, distribute to banks and stores, retail stores.
That's supposed to...
Everybody we've been in touch with in the Allison Hill Bridge.
Okay, but what about South Casper though? Like Paul made on down in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the same thing happening?
We have, we also have information on all of the buses, and we will be increasing that as soon as we have a date. We want to put interior bus cards that notify people of the changes that are coming. Just give them a basic information so that they can either call us, they can look online if they have that access, or give them some outlets that they can contact in order to get the information that they need.
Those notices will be on all seventy-eight buses. The buses rotate from one route to the other, and of course, we'll be...
So we're starting the buses on...
Actually, I'll be...
We have shelters. We post them when it's shell shelters?
Yes, in the area here we will, yes. And also at Transfer Center, yeah.
Have you also considered maybe talking to some of the news stations and see if they could run it like a banner going across? Because I know in the mornings, and I see NBC 27 is here, so I know they do it, where they'll run reports of events that occur while they're giving the news broadcast. And sometimes the eye will catch similar to the delays in closing, so maybe talk to them, see if they could run that for maybe about a month or so, till you guys feel that the public has heard it enough or seen it enough that the changes are made, and then, you know, take it off.
Communication strategy.
Yeah, thank you too for your efforts with this upcoming problem. But it's an improvement to the city, because that bridge connects Allison Hill with the rest of the boroughs downtown historically. But I'm just curious, has a head count been made during research of how many people actually walk across the Mulberry Street Bridge on a given day?
Again, this is a PennDOT, I believe they have, I don't know. Paul, can you speak to that? I know they had, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head.
I don't know them off the top of my head, but I'm sure they've taken them into account. They did traffic counts, and that includes pedestrians as well.
Yeah, I understand, people have been cooperating at either Paxton or Cameron Street as pedestrians.
And I have to admit to you, it's a subject near and dear to my heart. I love the block, and I know what it's like. And that is going to be tough. I really worry about the intersection of Market and Cameron, that's very problematic.
We also want to thank you, Al, for being here tonight, and Tara. So we've got some media coverage, we have Channel Twenty, the city's a public access station here, so this program tonight will air several times a day.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you so much, I appreciate you all attending.